Good afternoon, good evening. We're going to get started. Everyone could take their seats. Good evening, welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin, as always, with an invocation. The invocation will be done by Michelle Weaver, the BOC Executive Assistant, and then she will lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone would stand.
Father, we come to you tonight with grateful hearts. We thank you, Father, for this time and even this time of gathering together to discuss the issues and the concerns of the county. We thank you, Father, for your protection in your hand over this board, over the staff, over the residents of this county, and all things concerning. We thank you, Father, that as we go forward, we will seek those things that are set in righteousness and truth and honesty, Father. We thank you right now for everything that will take place tonight. We thank you for the protection over our public safety, those that put themselves in harm's way every day to protect us, Father God. And we thank you for what it is that you're doing tonight and every day forward. So we will give you all the praise, the glory, and the honor, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The following planning and zoning item was postponed for September 20th, 2022, BOC meeting, but has been tabled by the applicant, RZ-21-36. It's not a public hearing because we've had the public hearing. Hett Walker Jordan, PC of Stockbridge. That item has been tabled. The following planning and zoning item was advertised for September 20th, 2022, BOC meeting, but has been tabled by staff because it is pending legal review. We will be placing this item on the upcoming October 4th, BOC meeting for discussion only, and then we will re-advertise it and place it on a regular BOC night meeting for a public hearing and vote. So I have a question with regards to this. I know that we had talked about placing this item on the October 4th meeting regarding the amendment and ordinance change regulating short-term rentals. I guess for staff, could we not? I mean, we're going to have the discussion between now and the October meeting, so this needs to be advertised as a public hearing for October 4th. We're not going to push it to the end of October.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that. We've already sent out the advertising for it.
The commissioners will have ample time to get with staff and to get with our county attorney to address any concerns that they have with regards to short-term rentals.
Yes.
When we come back on October 4th, there will be a vote at a public hearing. So we're not going to push it to the last meeting in October.
Let's do it, yes, ma'am.
So if there's anyone here that was here for the rezoning of the property at Chambers and Jonesboro Road, that will not be heard tonight, and you may be excused.
I see that, hold on before you guys leave for that piece. This is a District 2 item, and at that particular meeting, I asked that it be tabled to another meeting so that the community could come out and speak. Prior to this, for the last six years, we've been looking at that particular property in that area. We've had numerous town hall meetings every year as a district, as a district 2, and my constituents are here. There are supposed to be, that property is future land use for mixed use. So we understand the mixed use portion, but the applicant was asking for rentals, which the community has decided that there will be no rentals passed. They would not support rentals past the firehouse sub. So this piece actually comes into the suburban, the residential area. They have come out because they wanted to acknowledge that they do not want to support. I think the last meeting that was here, you all can stand, the last meeting that was here, three people showed up. This is representatives from probably about six or seven different neighborhoods in that community. I would ask that if it's going to be put on another meeting, that there will be a public hearing, and if it's not a public hearing, that I have asked our county attorney to look to see if there was a way that the board could legally take a vote to allow the people to speak. Now, I know that I am their commissioner and I can speak for them, but due to a lot of changes in our board, I've not been able to actively do that without being voted against by other commissioners when my community knows I meet with them. And when I speak, I speak for them, and I have worked on their behalf. And so they're here tonight because we found out on Wednesday, it still read on the thing that it was going to be a meeting, but then the revised version said tabled. I didn't know that it wasn't going to be a public hearing because I specifically asked that they be allowed to come and speak.
I asked the clerk of commissioners to check, but my understanding, as to the rezoning of 21-36, there's already been a public hearing, so the public hearing has been had and closed. If this is a question of whether or not they can do public comments, that's a whole nother issue, but as to a public hearing, the public hearing has already occurred. Now with public comments...
So what about public comments? What does the law say for us to be, for my constituents to be able to speak and comment on this? And what is, can the board, like we used to be able to take a vote to see if they speak? Is that possible? Or should I just tell them to go home and they don't have a voice?
Okay, as to public comments, what the rule requires is that the public can make a comment on a item that was recently on an agenda or on the current agenda. However, the board by a majority vote can have public comments regarding a specific topic, if the board chooses to do so by majority vote during the public comments section. And the clerk of commissioner had just confirmed that there was, in fact, a public hearing regarding this matter, but there just wasn't a vote, so there would not be a new public hearing.
So I would request that we go back and look at that because I asked that it be tabled specifically so that they could come and speak.
We can go back and look at the minutes or what have you.
But we don't have to look at the minutes because the policy says that we can take a vote, and the people up here can decide.
That's as to public comments.
That's okay.
Okay, but as to the public hearing, the public hearing is closed.
But their comments can be on this item.
The comments, yeah, you can do public comments when you, the board usually does public comments, and if the board chooses to do so by majority votes, they can make comments regarding that item. So it would not be a separate public hearing, it would just be public comments.
So if we can get a majority vote now to hear from these constituents, we should be granted that opportunity.
During the public comments section?
Yeah, well, actually, I mean, the board can grant permission right now to hear from these people.
Stephanie, did anyone sign up for public comment?
No, ma'am. Not tonight, but if you choose to do public comments, we can allow them, but they would have three minutes each, and we would have to come up with a way to, I don't know if you just want to allow three minutes each for a certain amount of time, or you might want to put a time limit on it.
Okay, so, yeah, we need to take a vote, and it will be at the end of the meeting. We're going to get through the meeting, and public comments will be at the end of the meeting. So they need to pick a couple of representatives to come up and speak, hopefully for everyone, so we are, you know, I'm sure all of your concerns are similar, but if you can get three or four people that can speak for the entire group, especially if all of you all live in the same, some of you all probably might live in the same communities, have a representative from each community speak.
Well, Chair Harrell, the only thing about that is that I remember when the Confederate flag went down, 50 people, 100 people spoke against me, so I think that everybody...
That was before my time, Commissioner Clemens.
But I think everybody that wants to speak should be allowed to speak.
All right, well, you all can make a motion and see where it goes.
I would like to make a motion that the constituents that are here tonight be allowed to be added to the public comments, to speak on whatever they would like to speak on behalf of this agenda item that was listed.
Wait the whole meeting to speak.
Well, this is my meeting, and it's going to be at the end of the meeting as public comments are on the agenda. So you got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You got a second. End of discussion.
You said end of discussion. I would just ask that you all not leave.
Yeah, just say, it's not going to take long.
Not leave, and prepare yourselves to speak for three minutes, those of you who have something to say about this item on the agenda.
Sir, you're out of order. Okay, so we are going to move forward. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're going to move forward with the appointments. McIntosh Trail, appointment of elected official Judge Raph Bailey, State Court, to fill an unexpired term due to resignation of Judge Sam Chafin, Term 9/2022 to 5/1925. Can I get a motion? Got a motion, can I get a second? Got a second. There's no discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Hospital Authority nominee submitted to Hospital Authority to fill unexpired term of Jeff Cobble due to resignation, District 1, Peggy Carter, Shannon Brown, and Brian Andrews, term expires 12/7/2025. Can I, I'd like to call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a second. There's no discussion, all in favor. Motion carries. Can we have Shannon to come up and please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. This evening, I will be reading the consent agenda in the absence of our county manager who's attending the county manager's conference. Resolution to authorize the acquisition of 3,675 square feet of right-of-way and 2,310 square feet of temporary easement by negotiated contract or cumbination for Fairview Road sidewalks at 1563 Fairview Road. Resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,565 square feet of temporary construction easement and 494 square feet of driveway easement by negotiated contract or cumbination for Fairview Road sidewalks at 1014 Fairview Road. Resolution to authorize the acquisition of 8,450 square feet of right-of-way and 6,619 square feet of temporary easement by negotiated contract or cumbination for Fairview Road sidewalks. Those were all under the County Attorney's Department. Following are the Emergency Management Agency to read a resolution by the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of Cobb Web's Web Intelligence Solutions for $75,000 annually from Cobb Web Technologies. Lastly, Police Department, a resolution requesting the authorization to use asset forfeiture state seized funds to pay educational training costs in the amount of $22,000 over the course of a two-year period for a Henry County Police Department Sergeant to attend the Command College in Columbus, Georgia, and this ends the consent agenda.
I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a second? Okay, is there no discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the regular agenda, Transportation and Planning Resolution approving a contract with Y-Skies LLC to conduct the streetlights needs assessment study through a fund balance transfer, Sam Baker.
Good evening, good evening, Chair and the Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Can you all ask Chief Burnett to come back, please? I need him for another item. Okay, go ahead.
The Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes that many roads in the county need to streetlights. In the absence of a streetlight, it's a safety hazard for drivers and pedestrians. So back in 2020, the board considered installing streetlights on, at 11 different locations, and then later decided to look countywide where streetlights are needed, but at the end, you chose not to take any action in 2020. Earlier this year, on June 21st, you directed staff to solicit proposals to conduct a streetlight needs assessment study. Per your direction, we released a request for a proposal, soliciting proposals. We received three bids, and we selected Y-Skies LLC to conduct this study. The study will cost $200,000. Now, the important point is that it is the Board of Commissioners that initiated conducting this study. We, the staff, did not plan and budget for this study. So should the board decide to pursue this study tonight, there needs to be a transfer of $200,000 from the county's fund balance to a department to pay for this study. So the questions before you tonight are, should Henry County conduct a streetlight needs assessment study at this time? And if the answer is yes, how to pay for it? And that concludes my presentation.
Sam, is this study will be countywide?
It will be in incorporated Henry County.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Commissioner Holmes?
Why do we need a study to place streetlights in areas that we know we need streetlights?
We believe it will be more comprehensive than just a judgment. Of course, that will be certainly a part of the consideration where citizens feel streetlights are needed, but we came up with a number of criteria to consider concerning where streetlights are needed. Some of those would be where it's dark, where there's prevalence of crashes, where there's, has been crime, and so on. So the study will be, I guess, more comprehensive than just judgment, human judgment where streetlights may be needed. Commissioner Wilson?
So Sam, after the study, we have a funding mechanism to put these lights in place?
I don't think so. That is something we have to decide where funds will come to install the streetlights and pay for ongoing power.
So I think we need to establish some funding for the study and the streetlights to kind of, before we move forward, because if we do a $200,000 study with no funding to put them in place, I think the study is going to be on the shelf.
That is... Well, Sam, I'm still saying by the same thing that I said in 2020, that streetlights need to go in Henry County. I'm thankful that I was able to get streetlights on Jonesboro Road, but the rest of this county needs streetlights. Whether we have funding or not, we're funding everything else, and I think that community and constituents' lives are just as important. The roads are dark, they need to be lit. We have money in our tea sploths that can be used for lighting, and if we don't, this is what the funds, this is why citizens pay taxes, so that we can light up Henry County, and I still think that we need to do it. I'm with Commissioner Holmes as far as the $200,000. If we spend $200,000 for a study, how long is it going to take for us to implement it? And I would like to see the funding mechanism go along with it tonight. I hate that our county manager isn't here, but if David is here, maybe he can talk about how we fund it. We're funding the ones on Jonesboro Road. We're paying the bill every month. It's just a monthly light bill that we all have to pay, and we should pay the monthly light bills to light up the county. There were 11 roads that we talked about that needed lights, and that came as a result of you, Sam, coming before us, talking about the high accidents, the accidents that were happening in our community, and a lot of them because we're driving down dark roads, curves, can't see, and I think the roads need to be lit up, and I think we have to stop stalling. This has been going on since 2020. We need to decide how we're going to fund it, how we're going to fund paying the bills, and add it to our budget to fund the lights. So Chair, if...
We move forward with funding the streetlights on those particular roads. We know which roads need to be lit up. We know which roads are dangerous. We have the data, the accident data, for every road in Henry County. So why not just move forward with those specific roads that need to be lit up in our county? We don't need to settle for that.
I wasn't finished, Chair. I wasn't finished.
Okay, okay, one second, one second. Go ahead.
Not only the roads that are having high crime or crashes, but high traffic, lots of traffic. We got all of these store fairs that are going through our county now that are dark. If you get off 75 and you come up flipping road, it's dark, it's no streetlights. And so there are several that we've identified or that we need to go back and identify. I think the last time each commissioner got an opportunity to have roads that they wanted examined, put on the list, and that's what I would ask, that each commissioner be able to look at the roads in their districts, have you guys to assess the roads, and if they meet the criteria, that they be added to the list to be lit up.
So Sam, can you come up with a criteria that includes traffic, accidents, and crime? Because to me, that seems to be the top three, I guess, factors, and utilizing the data that we have with regards to crime and accidents and traffic, you know? Could you come up with a list in all of the districts that could be fair and equitable without doing the actual study study?
Should I?
Yeah, I want you to ask.
We did come up with a list of criteria back in 2020, which included the three that you mentioned. I can give it a try. I don't think it may be as extensive as a consultant with a team will be able to accomplish. This will be something in addition to the heavy workload that I already have, so I, but if you want me to do it, I can give it a try.
Just talk to each commissioner. Each commissioner knows their district. They can tell you exactly where roads need streetlights, and you can move forward with that particular list. It's just that simple.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry.
I want to go back to some of the things that Commissioner Clemens has mentioned. The study is not just to identify the roads that's needed. The study needs to encompass what's coming in that area. So the study will consider new builds that are coming, new subdivisions that are coming, new commercial... new commercial areas that are coming, whether or not the road will be extended. The study will go beyond just identifying the roads that needs to, that we want lit up, but it will talk about the impact that's coming in that area. I think it would behoove us to take the time to do this correctly. The study would determine the distance these lights need to be. I don't know that. I can say I want a road lit up, but I don't know how many feet the lights need to be from each other. Those are features and things that need to be done by an expert. So I'm going to support that this study needs to be done by an expert. That study needs to encompass the impact of what's coming in those areas as well, the impact of the, of course, the traffic that's in the area. I've seen the citizens are definitely calling for it. My senior citizen, I can't see at night, so they try to get home at a certain time. All these things are factors, and if we just start picking roads and saying, light up Jonesboro Road, and light up Flipping Road, and light up such and such a road, I think we're wasting our time and may not be using the taxpayers' money as resourceful as it can be. Okay, it's two-hundred thousand dollars. We bought a command vehicle that we may or may not use for two-point-five million dollars. Certain things are just needed, and I think we need to take the time and realize that we are growing, we need streetlights, and let a consultant come in, do a complete study of the unincorporated area to determine where those lights really need to be. And he needs to work directly hand-to-hand by planning and zoning to see what's coming in areas, and work with our Transportation Department to see the impact. They're talking about expansion of roads and determine where those lights need to be. We shouldn't be guessing at it. I don't want to guess at it. I really want an expert to help me make the right decision.
So, you know, I guess my comment, I know, but I'm going to make a comment as well, and I'll get to let Commissioner Wilson speak. Even, you know, we do this needs assessment. I think this could help us better plan as we move forward and as we're putting our budget together year to year. If the study says that we need streetlights in a certain area, then, you know, they should be rated like Tier One, Two, and Three of what is most high importance. That can help us plan so that as we do our budget each year, these are things that we can incorporate in our budget each year. So that's just my comments, but Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
So Sam, I asked you earlier about the funding, and when we, when they approved, I didn't vote for it, but when they approved the Jonesboro Road lighting, that's a ninety-seven thousand dollar a year just for them rights. So if we do a study and we got fifty, a hundred miles of road that needs to be lit, that's a lot of funding for those roads. For Jonesboro Road area, that little small area, ninety-seven thousand. So we need to make sure we have the funding to make sure we can do this. So that's, it'd be up in several million dollars if we're going to do the county.
Sure, it is a big price tag, but I think conducting a study could be a first step. And then, as Chair said, we can prioritize what is number one, what is number two, number three, and then decide, we don't have, may not be able to have funds to do, light all the entire county, but at least we can start. So again, this is something you initiated. I think there is some merit for it. The study could be a first step, and then we decide how to fund for it over the, over time.
And I guess when it comes to decreasing accidents and saving lives, decreasing crime, because people know that well-lit areas, you know, it decreases crime, and so if it means keeping our citizens safe, then I don't know how we can put a price tag on a person's life.
Chair, thank you for that. Ninety-seven thousand dollars is nothing compared to the lives that was lost on Jonesboro Road, and yes, you did vote against me on that, and I'm going to keep asking that staff brings this back until we fund it. Even if we fund fifty roads, that's five-hundred thousand dollars, I meant what, five million dollars? We got a budget of over two-hundred million. Five million is nothing. We're spending more than twenty million on an aquatic center. I think that if the citizens voted whether they have the aquatic center, the lights, they'll vote for lights. So I would prefer that we look at funding it and making a commitment to fund it, because it's been too many times that we'll vote for this assessment. And the assessment, give me an average of how long it's going to take, because Commissioner, I understand what you're saying about future projects coming. I'm really concerned about the projects that are already there. You know, District Two just happens to be a community that a lot of activity is happening. We don't have time to wait on stuff that's coming in Johnny's District down in Locust Grove, or the districts that's undeveloped. We're developed now. We need lights now. We need lights yesterday. So I would like for us to, if we're going to do the assessment, that we move forward still with the list that we already have, work with the commissioners. If that road meets the criteria, that it's put on the agenda to fund for the lights. If the commissioners don't vote for it, at least we've been able to do our job to put those streets on the agenda to be voted on for lights. There are a lot of roads that need lights now. So my suggestion is that we, if we vote for this assessment, that we would add to this, that we would fund at least some of the roads that have already been identified. When we did Jonesboro Road, we looked at the crime that was on there. We looked at the number of people that was traveling that road on a daily basis. We looked at the lives that had been lost on that road. We looked at a lot, and I presented all of that. I just did that as a commissioner. Every commissioner need to go look in their district and find their roads and present it, but I think that we should be able to do that, and we shouldn't have to wait on an assessment to do those immediate needs.
So when is our next splosh coming up?
Twenty twenty-four, November.
Huh?
November twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, okay. So it's going to take a minute to do the study. This, when we're talking about looking at future funding, then this could also as well...
It can't, because it's a monthly, it's a monthly fee.
But to do the installation...
We don't do it. Georgia Power pays for everything.
Oh, do they? Okay. All right, well, there we go.
We just need to pay a light bill.
Okay, so...
Georgia Power, also Chair, tells us where the lights need to go.
So do, so do we need a study?
When Georgia Power came out, when I, I had the conversation, they came out, they said, this is where the lights need to go. Sam, I don't even know if you were here then.
I was not.
Right. They came out, they looked at the road, they know exactly where they need to be placed. We don't have to do anything but identify and meet the criteria.
Okay, sure. Commissioner Anglin.
Sam, thank you. I just want to make sure, is this y'all's recommendation? Because I heard you say there might be some merit to this. So is this y'all's recommendation, or is this not y'all's recommendation?
It is simply my opinion on what you initiated. I realize that there are many areas in the county that are dark, and the roads need to streetlights, so I see merit in conducting a study. But again, this is not something that the staff initiated. You board initiated this, and I think there's some merit to it.
Thank you, Sam.
So Sam, instead of two-hundred thousand dollars, they're going to tell us how many lives have been lost after sundown in these roads that don't have lights? They're going to tell us how many accidents have occurred on the roads after sunset, and they're going to tell us how much crime there's on these roads after sunset with no lighting, correct?
Tell, no, but they will take those criteria into consideration.
But we need that. If we're going to pay two-hundred thousand dollars on the study, I need to study every concern that every commissioner has said. We're talking about crime, we're talking about accident, we're talking about lives lost, so we need to show that in the study. That way, when that study's brought before the board, we can sit there and say, well, if the lives have been lost on these roads and crime on these roads, that'd be a priority. So these need, that needs to be part of the criteria to study the number of lives lost, and you can go back for five years, how much crime you have, and the number of accidents when it's dark, on dark roads. That's a concern that every commissioner up here, and if that's going to be the case, put it in the study, please.
Yeah, I foresee this could be presented in a table, where we'll list all the criteria and provide data for...
We're really concerned about streetlights on, on dark roads. We can approve streetlights tonight as a board. We don't need a study. Everybody knows the roads that are a problem for citizens. We can approve that tonight. I mean, I don't understand why we keep going back and forth on this.
So I have a question for David. When we did Jonesboro Road, what funding mechanism did we use to pay the monthly bill?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Henry County community. In response to your question, Commissioner Clemens, we utilized general fund. Our Department of Transportation is how we were funding the payment to Georgia Power for those lights.
And is that typical for other communities that have well-lit roads? Is that how it's usually funded?
There are several ways of funding. That's one typical way of funding through our own general fund. Some communities also do streetlight districts. They do taxing districts where members of that community pay for the, not only the payment of the lights, they pay for the utility, putting up the lights as well as the bill itself.
Okay. So how much money do we have in general fund presently?
So in terms of our overall budget, of which this is not a budgeted item, we have about two-hundred sixteen million dollars. That's our budget, of which fifty percent pertains to public safety. If you're asking about our fund balance, and not all of that is cash, we have about, after we removed several of the items, specific priorities that this board had, we have about thirty million dollars that's available in fund balance, but I would not recommend utilizing fund balance for the continuing maintenance of streetlights.
But I know that we do have an excess that's coming, of funds that's coming, and I just think that the study is necessary, my last point. I think the study is necessary, but I also think that we should not wait on the study to go ahead and activate the streets that need the lights now, and I would like to see us vote to move forward with the half-staff to, if those streets that we've already talked about meet the criteria, if commissioners can bring you, set a date, set a deadline, and so that we can move forward with those other streets that need to be done before the study. Because the study might come back and say something totally different. It may take a year, year and a half, two years. Now we're talking four years, and I think that we can make, because we did Jonesboro Road in probably three months. So I think that we can get some roads lit quickly if this board will vote to go ahead and move on some of the streets.
How long is it going to take for the study?
Nine months.
Nine months. All right. And then, Commissioner Clemens, you're asking for us to vote on roads that we are not familiar with, that's on a list, and we don't know what the, what is the cost.
No, they were put on the list by staff. So staff presented, this was, staff came to us and they said, these are the high-impact areas. There was a list of roads.
You got a list of roads.
And Sam told us, these are the roads that have accidents. Do you remember that presentation, Sam? It's been about two years ago. And even if he doesn't, all we have to do is to present roads to Sam, and if they meet the criteria, he can bring the list and say, these are the ones that staff recommend.
So I asked to be tabled, it's because I can't make a decision based on roads that I'm not even, I don't even know what you're talking about.
I just would like to have a vote.
So it can be public. Okay, go ahead.
David, just one question. In your opinion, y'all...
Doing a great job with the finance. Thank you. Would it be prudent to wait, and we see where we stand financially, so we know where to draw these funds at?
There were a couple of issues that were raised, Commissioner Anglin. One was safety, which is a priority of Henry County.
Agreed.
With, if this board so desires, and so desires to vote, there's no scarcity of resolve on my part to find a way to make this happen.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So I'd like to call a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the assessment, and we would add to the resolution that each commissioner would present roads to staff in their districts and have staff to assess those roads based on the criteria. If those roads meet the criteria, that this board would allow our Finance Department to immediately fund lighting of those roads. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Okay, motion fails. Are we looking at approving the resolution that is on the agenda for a streetlight needs assessment study through a fund balance transfer of two-hundred thousand dollars?
Can I make a motion that we tabled this item?
We got a motion to table.
Until we identify funds.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of tabling the item to give, okay?
Table for a date specific. So if you could table it for a date specific.
Okay, so let's table this, because we need to have, give staff some time. Let's table it to the first week in November.
Are you amending the motion to the first week in November?
Okay, so can you do that? You made the motion, Anglin.
Motion, we table it the first week in November. Give us time to define the funding.
Commissioner Wilson, are you...
Sam's second.
Okay, you're second in motion.
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor of tabling it to Commissioner Anglin's motion. You got it, Stephanie? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. This is a public hearing to consider the approval of the proposed federal year 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rathan Bodine. I'm a Planner II in our Community Development Block Grant. I have for you this evening a public hearing to hear, or a public hearing to approve our FY 2021 CAPR. It's also known as our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and this is a requirement by HUD. So like I said, this is a requirement by HUD for us to annually put this out. It's basically our year-end report. It allows the community and staff to kind of see the overall progress of the program. We published a public notice back in August, August thirty-first of 2022 with a draft of our CAPR. So here are some of the accomplishments that we have had over the last year. As you can see, for our single-family owner-occupied housing rehab program, we were able to assist sixteen households. Our public services, we initiated projects with ten different agencies over the last year. With that, we were able to help food banks, homeless shelters, subsistence payments programs, health services, and youth services. With that, we were able to assist a little over three thousand different individuals. And then with our public facility and infrastructure improvements, those are our sidewalk projects in both the city of McDonough and the city of Hampton, we were able to assist about twenty-five thousand individuals. As you can see, over the course of the year, we were able to expend almost one-point-six million dollars. Now, we will submit this, our full draft of the report in the next seven days. It will be available online for public access, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Does the board have any questions? This is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak will have a total of three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak? So I'd like to call for a motion.
To approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, there's no discussion? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is annexation, twenty-two dash oh-five. The city of Stockbridge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Let's see if I can get this to work here. So yes, CS Stockbridge has requested an annexation of approximately twenty acres. The zoning map you see in front of you, everything in green is actually the city of Stockbridge, and the outline, green hash, is the actual... And the outline, green hash, is the actual Southern Crescent Rehab Center that is looking to be annexed into the city. This is the future land use map. It does call for mixed-use zoning. And everything on this map that's in white is actually in the City of Stockbridge. And so, this property is roughly 20 acres. In 1997, they did get a rezoning to go to ONI to allow for the Southern Rehab Center to go there. Last year, July 20th, 2021, came before the board to do a complaint amendment and a rezoning for that center as well. And we had placed conditions. So, I want to go through some of these conditions, not all of them. There's 24 conditions total, and hopefully I can answer some of the questions that have been asked here recently. So, condition one, the property shall be limited to memory care, assisted living, and independent living, with associated amenities and provisional care meeting these requirements. Condition four speaks to the residential portion of development consists of cluster of single-family homes, attached and detached units. At the time, the total number of units was only 100. Condition number 10 speaks to the subject property shall not be developed as a traditional single-family and/or multifamily residential development, even if it's age-targeted or age-marketed, or any other type of residential community that does not require each single-family attached or detached unit to house an individual with the requirements at a level of care that is provided by the assisted living facility. So, basically, if you're living there, whoever lived there has to be part of the facility. They have to be a patient of the rehab center. Number 16, it speaks to the number of building units, the number of bedrooms, two and three-bedroom units with two full baths. Number 17 speaks to the square footage of the homes. Number 23 speaks to an HOA being a part of the establishment. And number, I think it's number 14, it talks about the traffic impact study. So, that's customary for any of our rezonings. And so, this is the original layout that was presented to us back in 2021. This is the 100 units that we discussed. This is the new layout. If you look in the bottom right-hand corner here, this is the original rezoning that was done back in 2021. It's 100 units here, and the other units you see here is a total of 176, which will bring this to 276 total units. There are three points of egress on the site, one here, one here, and one here. The stipulation that we put on the builder or the developer at the time was they had to create a bridge or a second access for fire, and that access would have been in this area here. And so, again, there's no, future land use map designation is a mixed-use which supports the development. So, there's really not a substantial or significant change in the zoning and land use or increase in density or infrastructure for this project as proposed. Staff's recommendation, it would not create a significant change in surrounding land uses. And also, we have reached out to City of Stockbridge to speak to them to, if it is annexed, that they will continue with our existing conditions that we already have on the property.
Are you done? I'm sorry, are you done with your presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
I want you to go back to the DAT map.
Okay.
Of the DAT map. So, I have some concerns. I have concerns that the conditions will go away that we've placed on this. I have concerns that when we approved this, we approved it for 100 units, and now we're talking additional, how many units will be added to this?
176, it's proposed.
176. This entrance down here on the site map to the left of the development that we approved sits right in front of the Summit subdivision. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned that, I got a lot of concerns. I'm concerned about fire safety codes, because, say this. Sometimes the standards that we put in place are not always the standards that other people put in place. So, I have a lot of concerns about this. Is there going to be a traffic impact study? And if so, are they going to make their approval? Because once we annex, we have no control over this. And this impacts, I know specifically, areas in District 4. And I'm sure Commissioner Thomas has some comments as well. I know that I asked our fire chief to stay back because of, we provide fire services to the City of Stockbridge. And if their fire marshal cannot work with our fire department to make sure that things are up to code and standard, to the top standards, then I have concerns. And I'll yield to Commissioner Thomas, but I may have some more comments.
Number one, what is the reason they want to do the annexation?
I'm not quite sure. The only thing that I could come up with was, and the applicant's representative is actually here tonight. Maybe he can answer that question. But since they're building the road and building a bridge to go across that creek, maybe this would offset some of that cost. I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, the reason why I ask that question is that, Madam Chair, thank you. I worked very diligently with this group to come up with a plan of action for this area. And this is around the brain trauma center. And we are talking about individuals who have some medical needs, and that will be transitioning from the brain trauma center into some form of supported living facility, and then eventually, hopefully, to some independent living facility. But they will need some assistance for a while. We know where this sit. I know where it sits very well. I have went to visit this property on a couple of times to get an idea and a feel for it. We put strong stipulations here to make sure we are protecting the residents, to make sure that this brain trauma center can expand, because they're supposed to be expanding their services as well. And in expanding those services, they were going to have complimentary services surrounding it. Now, my concern is, what are you trying not to do? Who are you trying to, what are you trying to avoid? It's not like you're going in the City of Stockbridge downtown. What would this annexation give you that you can't get from the county? That's concerning to me. And I don't want people using the county and the city in any form of manipulation to get what they want. And I know, I think it's about 40-something stipulations we put on this thing to make sure it be what it said it's going to be. And I don't want this or any other development say, "Hey, if we go and play with this group, we won't have to do that." They have to build a road or a bridge or something in the back. And that road or bridge is supposed to be built at a certain percentage of homes that are built before they build all of them. That's for our fire and safety area that you're referring to, Madam Chair. We don't want to build something that's a hazard. So, my question is, what is the advantage of trying to move into the city when we have to provide the fire and safety for the city? What's the advantage of it? Well, what are we getting out of this, or what are they getting out of this? And I do agree, Madam Chair, we put a lot of stipulation on this. We've worked on this thing to try to make it workable. So, I'm not convinced that this is in the best interest of the county and protecting the citizens of the county and the purpose of the area. That's what I'm looking at. I'm not trying to say who's going to get the houses or who would get. I'm looking at, we did this to protect an entity, which was the brain trauma center and its purpose for that area. So, I'm concerned about what's causing the change now? What's trying to happen that's not being revealed or should be revealed?
Right, and so, just, again, I spoke with the Community Development Director in Stockbridge, and I told her I was going to say this tonight, that we would encourage them to still use our conditions.
You said the word encourage?
Yes.
I heard that.
Yes.
That's not strong enough.
So, well, I mean, again, you know, like I know, if they annex it, they could do with it. But I think, I have a working relationship with her, so I think they would consider those to be, because all of the heavy lifting has been done. And so, reinvent the wheel where you can just add the conditions and move forward. And they may even add some more for.
Commissioner Wilson?
Anexations with rezonings attached, we would file an objection. That holds them down for 365 days once the property is annexed. So, I have to look to the county attorney. Is there any other way that we can stop the annexation other than filing an objection?
No, not in this circumstance. We can file an objection, but we do still need to have a basis for the objections, which are limited to the property being landlocked or there being some type of material effect on the county from the rezoning. And that has to be with the zoning, the density, that type of stuff. So, other than filing the objections, I'm not aware of anything.
So, Madam Chair, that'd be my recommendation. If this right here is not going with the pleasure of the board to vote on this annexation tonight, just file an objection. So, they can't do anything for 365 days after an annexation is complete. And then, after that, we don't have any recourse on that.
Is there a representative here for this project? And then, I'd like to also ask our fire chief to come forward, because I have concerns about our trucks being able to get around in this development.
Yes, another thing is that an objection has to be attached to, if this is a drastic change from what it would be in the county. And we have to be able to show a negative impact from a safety perspective. So, more than just that, so, I know you didn't say that, Madam Attorney, but those two things need to have to be on there.
It's zoned mixed-use. And so, the rezoning for the Stockbridge is a PUD, which is in line with our mixed-use. So, the mixed-use allows 16 units to an acre. And I think, if I remember correctly, this is going to be roughly five units to an acre once it's all said and done, if all 200, I forget, 76 units are approved.
So, it's in line with what it would be in the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I just want to, I know Commissioner Wilson said objection, but if those things aren't met, we don't really have a legal cause for objection, and you can.
That's correct. There has to be one of the, there has to be some type of material effect, or it has to be landlocked. Now, once, if we file an objection, there's a procedure that the county and the cities have to follow in an attempt to resolve the objection.
So, the question would be, is there probable cause for us to file an objection before we just vote to file an objection?
We, I did, we, I did meet with planning and zoning. We did go through the criterias to see if there was any basis to file an objection. And there's no known violations for which the county should file an objection that we are aware of. So, we didn't see anything.
Hey, Steve.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking on this. I didn't even know it was on the agenda tonight. But I can speak to all of the hard work that we did with Commissioner Thomas and all of you during the rezoning of the Southern Crescent portion. And I can tell you that as the guy that was in there with you while we were developing those 20, 30 conditions, that I've communicated to my client that those conditions need to stay. So, we have, this plan does not change, at least on the Henry County side. Nothing has changed with regards to those. The owner of the rehab center also owned the property across the creek. And I think on our, maybe one of the maps, I think one of the things that was driving that additional connection was, in the future, after the first 100 units were built, they would need that additional connection. It was known at that time that he owned that property. There was a concern that came up, and I believe it was through his lenders, who was putting his funding mechanism together. There was concerns over public safety, having a project that was part in the city, part in the county, but one community or one development under one ownership. And if, just wanting to avoid the concerns over who would serve someone with an emergency. And I know shared fire protection, but I know there's police protection that's now different. And so, it was recommended by their attorney that all of the property be in one jurisdiction. I don't know, and I guess the easy, I didn't, wasn't my call, but the easy pick was to just to move the property from the county to the city. But I'm agreeing with Toussaint that those conditions, you know, should remain as it relates to at least the portion that was rezoned in Henry County. The plans that they're putting, nothing has changed with regards to their business model of age-restricted, you have to be a member of the entire facility to be able to live here. If you pass away while you live here, the community, or the owners, they have the ability to, first right of refusal to purchase the property back, to be back in the pool for seniors who need that multi-level care that's offered at this facility. So, nothing has changed with regards to their business model. It was just a decision that I think they had some legal concerns over, again, liability of public safety and if something bad happened, and being split jurisdictions.
So, let's talk about liability, can we get fire trucks in and out?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. I don't have a list of the concerns that the fire department had specifically, as Toussaint mentioned, when this program was undergoing. But yes, you are correct. So, our county is kind of unique in the things that have happened over the past couple of years when it comes to fire protection and the fire marshal services that the cities have adopted and moved to. You are correct. Each of the cities within sight of Henry County now has their own fire marshal. So, the unique thing about that, though, is that the county still owns the responsibility to provide all the fire protection to each one of the cities. Now, the City of McDonough has their own fire department specifically, so they're their own authority having jurisdiction within their city. However, the other three cities have their own fire marshal, which means that, you know, all the plan reviews, all the life safety codes is handled by that individual, you know, through the city. And there's no requirement that they have to report anything that goes on in the city to the county. But yes, we are still responsible for providing that fire protection. So, something could be built inside of a city that we don't know about. We don't go out and inspect it. We don't do the annual inspections on it. We don't do the pre-plans on it. That doesn't fall on us as it typically would in unincorporated Henry County, where we would receive all of those plans. We would do all the life safety codes. We would do all the annual inspections. So, we would know what was going on and still be, you know, have to provide those fire protection services to that community. But with the cities backing away and having their own fire marshal, you know, there's no requirement for them to report to us. So, you know, I can't answer that specifically, because we wouldn't be the ones reviewing the plans and so forth.
So, then, they're, they may not follow us as stringent. I mean, you guys are by the book. I mean, you follow the code, you know, so I would be, so there's no communication between you and the fire marshals in the other cities?
No, ma'am, I'm not saying that there's no communication. We do have a working relationship, as Toussaint mentioned, with the other fire marshals. But there's no requirement for them to have to report. And as Toussaint mentioned, there would be no requirement for them to actually, you know, implement the things that we recommended. You know, their fire marshal could go in and review, you know, those recommendations and make changes. And they could do that, because, you know, again, he's the one or she's the one that has that authority having jurisdiction now through the state.
So, I know that the units that were approved in the county, I know, these are townhomes, correct?
They're a mixture. There are some, most of the ones on the north side, where a lot of the ones on the north side are actually detached and not connected. But there are some townhomes or some attached.
So, I know what was approved in the county, and it was sprinkled.
That's right.
Okay, so.
And I can tell you, on the, not from the building side, because that's just not what I do. But I do remember that condition. But I'll tell you, from the planning side of it and the layout side, we do so much work in Henry County. We're finally understanding all the rules that the fire department enforces, which is great, on these projects, especially townhomes, with regards to dead-end streets and widths of driveways and that type of stuff. That layout is done exactly in accordance with those guidelines, because that's kind of what we've started designing everything to. So, with regards to the site plan itself, it meets Henry County. So with regards to the site plan itself, it meets Henry County and it probably, it may exceed Stockbridge, I don't know, but it definitely meets the Henry County requirements as far as just, you know, those, those planning constraints regarding buildings. Isn't it an international fire code requirement that you have multiple units attached, more than two or three, you have to sprinkle protect them?
Without getting too deep into the code, yes and no.
Okay. So hopefully there's, but I, I'll tell you that I can, I hate to, I don't want to commit to my, for my client, but his whole job is to provide a safe living environment for people that he's treating at multiple levels of care. And I can't imagine that he would be satisfied with not providing that same level, you know, for the, for these residents. So it may already be in a international fire code requirement, it may be in the city of Stockbridge's requirement, but I certainly will encourage that, that, and I believe that that is his intent, to not, you know, veer from those requirements, those health, safety, life.
And in addition, there are international fire codes, there are international building codes and so forth. There are a written standard, you know, that, that we hope everybody is adhering to. The difference is, is we just don't have eyes or boots on the ground to make sure that those codes are being enforced. That's, that's the only difference. There are codes and standards, yes, that, that are universal across the board, but, you know, we just don't have the boots on the ground in the other cities to make sure they're being enforced. And not saying that the other fire marshals are not enforcing that, that's not what I'm saying, no. It's just we don't have, you know, we're not in those cities.
It should be about communication, but that, that's my opinion. One, one last thing before I turn it over to Commissioner Thomas. So did your, your client not think about just de-annexing the land that's in the city of Stockbridge into the county?
You know, I don't know, I, I think I've heard before that's almost impossible, but I, I don't know, but I, it was briefly brought up, and I think from a legal standpoint, I'm not, I'm starting not even to pretend, that it's very challenging to go one versus the other. I think it's really challenging to de-annex, from what I understand, but.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, you took one of my questions. Because this, the nature of this facility, and when your owner did come here, one of the things he stressed is how much he really wants to do work on behalf of this community. He's soulless on that. He took a long time talking about his commitment to his practice and the service to this community. That was one of the reasons I worked so hard with him to try to get this thing approved. De-annex, de-annexation is not impossible. It may be a little bit more trouble, but not impossible. And hearing our fire marshals say that, I mean, our fire chief say that the fire marshals are not required to have this type of communications with him, it's more subjective than anything. And knowing the nature of the work that's supposed to be taken here and the people that we're supposed to be serving, I really am against this annexation. I think maybe the first one I have been against. I really am. And I would like to see you have a discussion with your client and see if indeed, as the chair has stated, what about keeping this in the county? We will work diligently with it. We have what needs to support it, be it from public safety to fire safety and the board who has committed to this expansion here and that community. And they are all detached. There are no high rises on this, on this plan that we originally talked about, unless you've added something I don't know about. That's right, because there are no townhomes, Madam Chair, in this plan that originally came before us. Everything is a detached, for age targeted, or a mental or a physical targeted community that needs assistance in some form or fashion. So, Madam Chair, I stand against this. I'm not sure if you're ready for a, a motion or what have you, but I do not see this as being a healthy transition. It's more like something that's convenient. Well, go out there and fight for what you want and keep it where it needs to be. It can happen.
Any other comments from any commissioners? Okay, so what is the board's pleasure? We call for a motion to approve the annexation? Is that what we do? Or is this, is this a public hearing?
It's not.
It's not a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Okay, it's not a public hearing. So, so we can make a motion to object to the annexation or to approve the annexation?
I'd like to make a motion to object to this annexation.
Got a motion on the floor to object?
Second.
Not a second. There's no other discussion. Those in favor? Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Chief Bernard, for staying. Planning and zoning, RZ twenty-one dash twenty-seven, not a public hearing. Turn Stone Group LLC of Atlanta request a rezoning from RA to C three for property located at eight thirteen Jonesboro Road. Okay, District Three.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located at eight one three Jonesboro Road. The property is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning to C three for interior self-storage. This case was heard in the August sixteenth BLC meeting, but we couldn't come to a decision, so it was tabled for this date. The subject property is highlighted in green on Jonesboro Road and is surrounded by a number of different zoning districts. The future land use map is classifying the property in this strip of Jonesboro Road as commercial. So all this red is commercial future land use designation. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of two point six two plus or minus acres from RA to C three for an indoor self-storage facility. The subject property is located within the boundaries of the highway corridor overlay district, and the development will be required to comply with the standards therein. The subject property can meet the minimum development standards for commercial properties as established under the highway corridor overlay district, and the developer has updated their renderings and elevations as shown in the presentation. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request with the following conditions, which I will read out loud for the record. One, C three uses should be limited to self-storage facility uses. Gas stations and car washes are prohibited. Two, at least twelve hundred square feet will be dedicated to shared office co-working units within the front of the building. The co-working space, the co-working space will include a shared kitchen and bathrooms. Three, twenty-six parking spaces should be provided, and six of those parking spaces may be within the forty-foot eastern buffer but outside of all setback lines. And four, the development should be consistent with the renderings and elevations shown at the September twentieth, twenty twenty-two BLC meeting. This is not a public hearing, but considering that there are updates to the plan and the elevations, I think it would be appropriate for the applicant to say a few words about their changes. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Andy Welch. I'm here on behalf of Turnstone Group. Their executives are here as well, so if you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to address them. You may recall that this, the, the county has been moving towards a, a mixed use of all, of all these types of buildings. So as, as you're developing along the main corridors, you all have been looking for mixed use buildings so that they, they would integrate more than just the primary use. So what, staff's already gone through all the zoning, so I'm going to skip to this. This is the area we're talking about. It's, it's the property and adjacent properties are all in just very, very poor shape with houses that are dilapidated and falling in. This area has not been redeveloped for, in any way, shape or form for, gosh, over a decade. And, and it's, it is depleting your tax base when you could be getting commercial value out of these properties. This would hopefully spark that because it's sort of located in the middle of this block where you have these homes and dilapidated homes and, and wooded areas and would allow for this redevelopment in this particular corridor. The plan originally had, all of this area here was just one big surface wall. It was, there was no, there was no penetration, no windows located here. And so part of this, part of the requests from staff and the discussions with the commissioner was to, to make sure that this building also had an office component to it. And in speaking with the chairwoman, also to break up this building so it didn't look like just a monolith. And, and so that was the impetus for looking at this building and changing the, the view of the front. Now it will have the Cube Smart or the self-storage indoor air-conditioned secure cameras facility. But in addition to that, will have a, a, a office component to it that people can rent office space here while they're transacting business. Oftentimes individuals have a home business and they actually are storing their goods and wares at one of these facilities. And so this will enable them to utilize the office space in the building to, to, to transact business. So we've added an office component, so making this a true mixed-use building with conference rooms, break room, break room, sorry, waiting area, and then, and then several offices and restroom for this to be added to the building, making it both office and storage in the same, same building. Those are the, the staff's already read the conditions to you, and of course, if you have any other questions about it, we'll be happy to take those.
Come on.
Yes, sir.
Question that we were going to improve the buffer, was that included in the language?
So the buffer is naturally undisturbed anyway, but if you'd like to add it to the language for the conditions, then we'd be happy to do that.
Want to make sure there were the additional trees that we had discussed on the side?
Yes, sir.
Sides of the building. Applicant okay with that?
We had contemplated that as well, enhanced landscaping for visual screening along the property boundaries.
So is that in the condition?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so it needs to be added to the condition?
Yes, ma'am. So when you make your recommendation, if you choose to approve it, you can just add that, add that condition that you'll have enhanced buffers and vegetation along the boundary of the property.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
Could you please go back to your floor plan?
Yes.
Where your cubicles are?
By the way.
What are the size of those cubicles?
These are eight by ten. This, this particular drawing is eight by eight. We had a redesign of that to make those office spaces an eight by ten space.
So what floor is that on? First, second?
First floor.
So where is your office space for your, your storage area? Where is that at?
Good question. It's, it's the area to, this is the area. This is the, the office space.
Where's those Cube Smart offices?
Yes, so it'd be, maybe I'll go back to the building facade and show from there. So the, this area is the entrance to the office for the storage unit will be this, in this area here, and this area here is now the office where you can rent office space. No, we did not. We actually, we actually gave up rental spaces for storage spaces in order to incorporate this twelve hundred square foot area. And, and that was also because we didn't want to increase the impervious surface of the, of the building or increase parking spaces, which also creates that impervious surface.
Why don't you say, just stay there for a moment, that we were trying to do in this whole process, is not inundate Jonesboro Road with storage units, okay? So thank you for trying to. Thank you for trying to give us some alternative here with the office space down on the first floor. I am really concerned about two things. You made it a mixed-use building. I know Cube, what is Cube Smart, is a self-storage unit, and you have office space available. I think you need to fix that signing so that it'd be more prevalent that professional office space is available. And go back to your cubicles again, because I'm, I'm not satisfied with where we are there. It looks like to me, and I know you've tried to be gracious with this, that that space need to be a little bit more dominating to me, okay? And I say that because we don't want the, the public storage to be so domineering that the office space look like an afterthought just to meet a demand, is what I'm saying. We don't want to just minimally, let's give them something so we can get this thing passed. We have a lot of people that are working at home, and they, they like it, I'm one of them, but they do like to meet their clientele's and offices and what have you. I would like to see you expand that area a little bit farther back into that cube space where it's more receptive to individuals who may want to have not just a day-by-day rental, but maybe an extended rental area there as well. So that's one of the requests that I would make, Madam Chair, to see if that's possible. I'm not happy with another storage unit on Jonesboro Road at all. We have a huge one there and I think a couple more. I just don't see it. So if we're going to look at something innovative, it needs to be really innovative and not just, we did something to get it passed. And I'm not satisfied with what you have here. I'm not. I know it's in D three, but I'm not satisfied with what you have here.
They have a partnership with, with another entity that will be doing that. This is, this will be a new model for this entity.
So is this something similar to like WeWork?
It is.
WeWorks where you rent, I mean, I guess, would it be short and long-term rentals? If you had a small business that needed office space to come in and conduct business, so they would have an option to do long or short, short-term rental?
That's correct, yes.
The way this is designed, in my opinion, we have short term, but I don't see how it would definitely accommodate anything long-term for its privacy and the ability to store things and be a little bit more secure. So that was my concern as well.
Andy, is Cube Smart the, I have a couple of questions. So is Cube Smart the applicant and is Cube Smart going in this building or is Cube Smart named just on here?
No, Cube Smart is the, the contractor that's going in to, to use the, the storage space.
Okay, so I want us to be very clear that Cube Smart, is that correct?
Yes. Adam, you want to come up and just verify?
So Cube Smart is a franchise, and I'm not sure that that's permitted. And I guess he can tell us that you can add another business in there like that. And then the other thing you mentioned, somebody mentioned WeWork. WeWork is a franchise, so we can't say that's what's going to go there. It would have to be a private rental. So this would really be a whole separate business if it's truly a workspace. So I just want us to make sure that we're being transparent.
Cube, Cube, Adam, Cube Smart is the, is the?
Cube Smart is the property manager. We are the owner. I'm, I'm with the Turnstone Group. We, we would be the owner of the development after we built it. We would hire Cube Smart as the property management firm to manage the Cube Smart space, and we would hire a different property management firm to manage, you know, what people have identified as a WeWork or Regis. That's just to, to get people familiar with the concept, but it's our own product, our own management, you know, that we're hiring a management company. But it's, you know, it's, it's our own facility from the co-working space. It's not WeWork or Regis or anything like that. It's just the concept so people understand.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, here in, Commissioner, I, one more.
Where is this on Jonesboro? I know it's in District Three, but where on Jonesboro Road? Just so people will know where it is.
Yes, it's, you know where the, I think it's Heritage subdivision is located? There's a long gap of. There's a long gap of a series of homes that is, if you're headed into McDonough from the interstate, it's on the right-hand side, and after you pass the eye doctor's office, that's the.
I'm sure it's, yeah. Because I know there's one right, when you get off of 75, going south, you make a left, there's a still, a new storage unit there.
It's just beyond that.
So, and where is this one?
This is, so this map here, this is Oak Grove. The new Willow Lane is right here, and this is the property in green.
So how many miles from the others, the new, the other one?
Probably within a mile.
Within a mile?
And, and they know this, so we, this application has been in the works for over a year now. Knowing that the other storage facility was coming in, they're, they're very much aware that this is, that the other facility is there. But, and they know that the market share is large enough to support their building, which is substantially smaller than the other one that's across the street and closer to the interstate.
And I would just say, out of respect for commissioners in their district, I try not to tell commissioners or go against commissioners, because they're supposed to do their work like I do my work in their districts. So I just want to be clear, I also disagree that there's another one that's needed right there, but if the commissioner has done his homework and he wants to do it then, because I want the respect, when I do something for my district, I would respect the commissioner, but I will say that this is going to be totally up to the commissioner of that district to make that decision, and his constituents have to deal with him and not us.
So I think it's important that this board did approve ordinance amendment that basically prohibits future self-storage to go on the highway corridor overlay district.
Yeah.
So this will literally be your last one.
Yeah, but I know that when we did the overlay, when, when we, when we did the overlay district, there were certain square feet as well, so this is over the square feet of what's allowed in overlay, because I remember the overlay because I had so many streets in the overlay. So this is, I don't know, I don't remember, I think, I don't know who did the other one, but I don't know that this met it. So, I mean, like I said, I'm gonna have to defer to the commissioner of that area.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but their application was in prior to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Putting this ordinance in place, is that correct?
The application was in and they had already gone through the zoning advisory board.
Okay, so, 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 okay, all right. Commissioner Angler, I'm going to turn it over to you because this is your district.
So per ZAB recommendation and conditions approved there by staff, I recommend we move forward. Motion.
Adding, adding, adding your condition.
Adding our conditions and the condition of the screen.
State your conditions on the shrubbery and the trees.
Yeah, with the condition of the shrubbery and trees.
Got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. Those in favor, those opposed, motion carries. We're gonna, we're gonna come, but y'all wanna go on through the minutes. So I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the minutes for August 16, 2022 regular scheduled BLC meeting. I understand, let me, let me run this. Okay, so I, I, oh, okay, hold up. Okay. All right, sorry. RZ 21-31 site plan approval for Blue River Development LLC.
Good evening again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members and citizens of Henry County. This next case is a site plan review only. This rezoning, RZ 2131, was approved on August 16, 2022 with the condition that the applicant will come back with an updated site plan for BLC approval. So the property is on Mount Carmel across from North Bridges. Here's a survey of the property. And here is the updated site plan. It's a little hard to see on the screen, so I will place it on the overhead, and that way we'll be able to kind of zoom in and out to discuss the details. So again, this isn't a public hearing, but I, I think it's very important for the applicant to come and speak to some of the things that they changed about the original site plan. One of the biggest concerns was this road hadn't been abandoned by the county, so the developer had to go and redo their site plan to basically put this road in and to work with the county to figure out how that would work. So staff is recommending approval of the site plan, and I think this would be an appropriate time for the applicant to come and explain how they got to this point.
Okay, yes. Because we voted on it in last meeting, we, we asked them to bring it back so we can vote just on the site plan. So we've already had, so we've already had public hearing on this, we've already voted to move forward with this particular item. The one request or the one condition was to bring back a site plan for us to approve. So what we're voting on is just the approval of the site plan. So Steve, if you would, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. This, as Kamal mentioned, the, the right-of-way came up kind of at the last minute during the public hearing portion of this, and we, the applicant was willing to construct at his expense that segment of the North Bridges Road extension, which we are also in, working with the developers on the north side of Mount Carmel to continue that extension that's generally shown there just on the south side of, of Mount Carmel Road, which would ultimately end up at Jonesboro Road to provide another alternative access to, to the interstate or to Jonesboro Road area. But this layout does comply with all of the conditions that were approved that night. If you can see them on your screen, there's a, all of the, the items with the box around it represent a, a specific zoning condition. It was just so that we could illustrate how we complied with those conditions. And then we went through and updated some of the renderings that we presented during that hearing to really highlight what the section would look like along the North Bridges Road extension. So this is the same architectural style that was presented during the, the board hearing. The, the road that you see to the left would be the North Bridges Road extension. Those buildings are rear-loaded, obviously no driveways on North Bridges Road, but they would face North Bridges Road to give a nice streetscape along there versus looking at the, the garage side of the houses from Jonesboro Road. But there's a, it'll be tree-lined sidewalks, and then there's, here's another view from the street. Again, this will be a gated community, so you can see the wrought iron fencing that would be installed along that streetscape with sidewalk, street trees, et cetera. So we think it's a, a good revision to the plan. Thankful to staff for bringing that issue up with the right-of-way, because that could have been a mess, and thankful to the applicant to be willing to spend the money that it's going to cost to extend that county road through there. So other than that, no material changes, no increase in the number of units, it's just a, a little bit different, a different layout. Same amenities, everything. So I'm happy to answer, answer any questions that you might have.
So Commissioner Thomas?
Steve, thank you for bringing this layout back. A couple of things that I'm not seeing here, but make sure they're there for us, overflow parking, which I don't see any place there. We need to make sure that's a part of the community. The other thing too, I'd like for you to add, and that's planning and zoning or data where they need to go, but we need to add speed bumps in here, so when you're building the roads, go ahead and put the speed bumps in, so we won't have to worry about that.
You, you're talking about on the interior roads, not Bridges Road?
Interior, yes. I don't see, I know you do the highway overlay plan when it comes down to lighting and what have you. A lot of people don't know what that is, so I don't see what's indicated in your layout. So I would like to make sure when you do these, that we can see what type of lighting you're proposing interior-wise for the community. And we also want to make sure, since this is a gated community, on each exit, that you have some form of security cameras that our police department can have access to. So it's best to ask them what type to put there, just on the entrance and exits, so we wanna know who goes in, who comes out, okay? That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you please make sure, Kamal, that he gets those updates and they are a part of the documents going forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, so is there street, it's already on, on this plan additional parking, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, there's, there's parking, here, 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 there's parking there, parking there, sorry, I think it's probably in the way. But yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to see at that scale, but yes, ma'am, there is, I, I heard you the last time, definitely, and I've, I've added the parking.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Commissioner Clemens?
I have a concern about adding speed bumps in somebody else's community. I know that speed bumps makes fire trucks and ambulance and everything else slow down, and I think that should be up to the community. It also, there's been studies done that it can also decrease the values in the homes, so I don't think, I can't support putting speed bumps in somebody's community that I don't live in. I think we should leave that up to the people that move there.
The, the, I'm sorry, can I say something? Yeah, I would say too, just one thing to consider for Commissioner Thomas with the concerns over speeding, is that a majority of the vehicular traffic is likely to be in the alleys, because all of these are rear-loaded. I just wanted you to remember that all of these buildings are rear-loaded, and those alleys are one-way, and they'll be narrower than the roadway. So naturally, I think that's going to discourage speed through there for the, most of the vehicles. The, the fronts of the buildings is going to be a roadway, but again, the patri, the people that live there likely are going to be driving their cars, parking them in the rear, and that's more, or more or less going to be a pedestrian corridor, but.
The only reason I'd ask for that again is because of our process of adding them later, but this would be a private community.
It'd be a private.
But our process of adding them later is so meticulous, and it does cause problems. And when I say speed bumps, I'm not talking about those big old humps, I'm talking about, what's the new term they use for those things that you can easily?
Like a speed table?
Yeah, the table, that's what I'm concerned about.
And again, this would be one owner too, just, so, you know, one owner will own the entire community.
Yeah, just, just to make sure that it's helping to make sure that we make sure speeders are not speeding through the community for the safety of children.
Sure.
I don't expect for you to sprinkle them everywhere, that's why I want to be up to you where you put them, of course.
And this is a gated community, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Both, both, both communities would be gated.
Okay, thank you. Okay. No, no further questions? I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Angler.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the revision of the site plan.
Okay, so got a motion, you can get a second.
Are you including this stuff that commission, or you just?
Just as is.
I second the commissioners, the district commissioners.
Okay, got a motion and a second. And no further discussion, all in favor. Those that are opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need the approval of the minutes for the August 16, 2022 regular scheduled board meeting? Can I get a motion? You can get a second. No discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. Upcoming meeting is October 4, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. is a regular scheduled board meeting. October 18 at 6:30 p.m. is a regular scheduled board meeting. Now we move into the area of public comment. Commissioner Clemens, you, you, the, the board voted to allow for public comments with regards to the property at Chambers and Jonesboro Road. Commissioner Thomas, if, if you could come and take this over, just for a second for me, and if there's, if you wanna, yeah.
If you're gonna make public comments, you would just need to line up and be ready to make your comments. After you make your comments, you can move or leave, and the next person can come up. So all those looking to make public comments in reference to the Jonesboro Road, Chambers Road apartment complex, please come forward now and form your line to speak. You come on up, the first person can come on up, so, and each person has a minimum of three minutes, I mean, has a maximum of three minutes.
My name is Lisa Ward. I live at 771 Peninsula Overlook in the Crystal Lake community, and I object to the apartments coming up on Jonesboro Road, because right now, when we leave out of the community, especially in the morning when I'm trying to go to work, the traffic is backed up and it takes me about 20 to 30 minutes to get from North Mount Carmel all the way to the interstate. Now, if we were to add additional apartment complexes onto that road, it, we will not be able to even get out of our subdivision to even go to work. And from my understanding, the, the road is not due to be expanded until about two years from now if we get a, a grant to do that, otherwise it's going to be like 20, 30, from my understanding. And if it's going to be that long for us to add an additional lane or two lanes to that road, we are going to lock people into their communities, and I do not think it's right. Another thing, I live in this county, but when I want fine dining, when I want to go shopping somewhere, I have to leave this county and go take my money to another county. Why don't we consider fine dining? Not considering an additional apartment complex, an additional storage unit, or whatever else that is that you guys have in mind to put on these roads, because I want to spend my money in my county. I do not want to take my money to Fulton County, Cobb County, I want to spend it here. And it does not make any sense for us to have to leave here to go somewhere else when we have adequate space to start building and making our county a destination place versus some other county a destination place. Now, I understand that you guys come together and vote, you know, in, in everybody's, the district's favor, but sooner or later, you guys got to come together and vote in your constituents' favor. We do not want a, a row full of storage units, a full of U-Hauls, that's another thing, add a full of U-Hauls, full of, just apartment complexes, and all this other stuff that you guys are looking at inundating our area with, that is not what your constituents want. And it's time for you guys to start looking at what we want and.
Thank you for letting me speak.
My name is Angie Collins, and I reside inside of our Crystal Lake Golf and Country Club community. And I'm speaking in opposition of the apartment, the proposed apartment complex at the intersection of Jonesboro Road and Chambers Road. I guess what struck me as odd is here we are in Henry County, half an hour outside of the largest airport in the country, and the best that we seem to be doing is more apartment complexes, more storage units, things that are not necessarily adding value to the community. I took it upon myself to actually go to the one over by Sam's, they're, they're modestly full. The new one that's just been built is practically empty. And so when I saw this, this evening about putting a, a meeting facility, that's not appealing to me. I don't want to have a business meeting and seeing people hauling things in and out. So I still don't want to see more storage units. Is, if, if, if I'm understanding it correctly, it looks like there are going to be three, potentially four, storage units? And, and the traffic, it's, it's an absolute nightmare. So I, I definitely wanted to speak in opposition of that and give you guys an idea, because one of my neighbors was so kind to send me a picture of what the traffic from Crystal Lake, which is no more than five. from Crystal Lake, which is no more than five minutes away, what it looks like on a Saturday. Is there somewhere I can put this so you all can get a better picture? No, not this time?
Where?
Right here? Do you all see that traffic? We're less than five minutes away, but it can take us 15 to 20 minutes to get down the street to a shopping center. And yet, we're talking about adding. We're talking about adding more apartments, more townhomes that are rentals. Has anyone ever considered, instead of making them rentals, maybe making a community that's townhomes and homes that are gated, that people own? Because when you don't own anything, you don't take pride in it. We don't take pride in it. There's crime, there's theft, there's litter, there's so much more that we as taxpayers have to endure. So I'd really hope that you all would consider what is best for the constituents and listen to what it is that we want, because what we don't want is what seems to be passing. Another thing that I definitely wanted to make sure that I brought up was, a friend of mine lives in, because I heard one of the, from the August 16 meeting, the gentleman that was proposing the apartment complex, he used the word luxurious in front of linoleum, which I thought was rather odd because when I think of linoleum, I don't think of luxury in the same sentence. But he lives in a community, and this was a month ago, and I believe it's right down the street from here, and it is Creekside. He had his mother visiting. There was a shooting at 1:00 in the morning. So when you say apartments, townhomes, they don't make a difference. They do make a huge difference of the caliber of people that do move into the community, which bring your property value down. Thank you.
Your name and address, please, sir.
Absolutely. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joel Wilcox, Jr. I live at 156 Luke Cove. I'm in the Holly Ridge subdivision. Of course, I'm focused. When the first, this was first proposed years ago, I still appear, Mr. Commissioners, and I say the same thing I'm going to say now. We don't need what you're proposing, what you've already apparently approved in our community. I said it then, I'll say it now. We don't have the infrastructure. Those infrastructure concerns have not been addressed, yet we're bringing it back into the situation again. Our police are overworked, our fire department understaffed, yet we have another, and the sad thing is, we have one, two, three apartments in that block area going up now, and we want to add another one to it with no consequence about the traffic. We already talked about the traffic, the crime. It's relatively safe now, but come on, we're going to add this to it? We're bringing in short-term, Henry County, we came here because people come to stay. People come to build a community. But what we're proposing now is no community. We're going to approve short-term leases, so we're going to improve a community lifestyle and make this your home. No, let's build, let's build homes. Let's build something that we can be proud of in Henry County. I'm tired of driving to Atlanta for entertainment. I'm tired of going to McDonough Square hoping to find something new in Hampton, hoping to go down to Tanger Island and hoping it's a new restaurant open. Let's invest in small business. Let's not keep investing in small living. Let's encourage our people to do better. I stand before you, asking you to please, let's address the traffic concerns. Let's address the lighting concerns. Let's address public safety before we worry about building new communities. I just implore you to do that. I implore you to think beyond the boundaries of our districts and to think about Henry County as a whole, because I think that's what everybody up there wants to do, is because if one district fails, that hits all districts. We are not individuals. Everyone in this room, we make up a whole. We bring our differences together to build what I hope to continue to be a county I can brag on. I do get tired of leaving the county for things, though. I do get tired of sitting and having to judge when I leave my house because I don't know if it's going to be traffic. And we're going to add to it without addressing those concerns. So please, commissioners, help us. Help us help you. Help us want to keep you around by showing you that you care, you love us. That's all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Your name and address.
Good evening, board, chair, and everyone here. I would like to first thank you for giving us this time to speak, but I want to address something that Carletta said in the beginning of this meeting.
Excuse me, sir.
Commissioner, she stated that this is her meeting. Every person in this room, this is our meeting. I will say that, and I will stand on that, and I mean that. This board needs to learn common decency and respect. As my fellow neighbors said, I've been preaching time and time, meeting after meeting, "Stop the bleed," and I mean it. We have built Jonesboro Road up faster than they can build a skyscraper in downtown Atlanta. But every time that I come up here, it's falling on deaf ears. I am a homeowner in Henry County. I chose Henry County to buy my first home. I may look young, I'm 31 years old. I've been a taxpayer of this county for about seven years now. So I expect the people that I put in place to hear exactly what I'm saying. And I thank my Commissioner, District 2 D Clemens. I thank her. You guys should take notes, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Brooke Winfrey. I'm District 2. Live off of Chambers Road, right across the street from where this community is going. Again, I want to thank you for the commissioners for voting to hear us tonight. I really appreciate you guys listening to us and making eye contact with us and engaging, just basically hearing what we're trying to say. I basically am picking back off of what Jamal said. First-time home buyer in Henry County. I really want to make this a wonderful place to live. I'm passionate about bringing entertainment and things that we can actually do here in this county and stay here. And really just do not want more traffic and apartments. I know we keep hammering this over and over, so I think it really comes back to probably concurrency laws that Florida has, is like, we need to start thinking outside of the box with these developers. I mean, how can we bring the entertainment here to us? How can we bring these opportunities that are being given to north of the city, in Atlanta, and other places? Why can't we bring that here to Henry County and just apartments? So how can we make the changes? How can we work with the developers and the commissioners and everyone to bring here what we want?
Thank you. Next, your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Joel Wilcox, 156 Luke Cove, Hampton. I live in Holly Ridge. I grew up here. I went to Creekside Christian Academy at 12 years old, and I graduated from Hampton High School in 2017. So to say I know Henry County is to say I know the back of my hand, right? I came here to kind of give you a youth perspective and not only to speak for the elders in my community who unfortunately had to leave because you guys moved the public comments to the end of the session, which personally, I think is a disservice to them, who it really matters to. For me, my big question is, what is the end game here? Like, how much are we going to build and build and build? I worry about my parents. I worry about my young nieces and the future of our communities. Like, we're not going to want to live in an apartment, like, in an apartment on a busy road when, like, my age? I'm 23 years old. I'm not, we're not thinking about moving here to be in an underdeveloped neighborhood like this. Not sorry, not underdeveloped, but just, it's a lot going on, right? Period. And if I see that now, imagine the people my age seeing that in the future. You know what I'm saying? And I really want you guys to think about that. I think about people because it feels like we're thinking about numbers, and I don't like that. I'm not a number. My family's not a number. The people in my community are not numbers, and we need to speak up for them. I also heard you guys say something about Firehouse Subs. I'm not wanting to go past that. And to me, I'm already seeing you guys go past that with building a Publix right next to my neighborhood. Do you guys want to live next to a Publix? I assume not. And it kind of feels like it's too late, like it's slipping out of my hands, and I want to bring it back to things that matter, which is community. So, yeah, thanks.
Yes, hello. My name is Sean Connors. I stay at 133 Traditions Lane, Traditions at Crystal Lake. I did 36 years in the military. I decided to land here in Henry County and build my home. And I moved here in 2013. It was said that with five years, Jonesboro Road would be extended. Well, it's 2022. It's still not extended. And when I leave my home to go to take my son, my grandson, to Mount Carmel Road, it takes me a good 15 minutes to get from my subdivision to Mount Carmel because Dutch Town Road, the kids are going to school. And if you're talking about adding an apartment complex on top of it, not only are we talking about the area, but we're talking about the crime. We're talking about, I'm from the projects. I have no problem with it, but that comes Section 8, that come crime. And y'all don't live in that area, so y'all don't worry about that. Y'all in a gated community, but our homes have went from $200,000 to over $600,000. And with that, we expect, we expect, I pay over $6,000 in property taxes. But I can't get the respect to have a wider road. I can't get the respect, thanks to our commissioner, we have lights. But y'all sit up there and want to show us that y'all not concerned about our safety. Y'all say that, but actions speak louder than words. I've protected this country for 36 years. I've been to places that y'all would never want to go. And if it wasn't for me, y'all wouldn't have this. But I expect now for y'all to take care of us. And Commissioner Clemens is doing that, but she can't do it alone. And so y'all tell us that y'all, our voice matters. Y'all tell us our safety matters, but from where we stand, where we sit, that doesn't matter. You speak, but actions speak louder than words. My commander used to always tell me, "It's not what you say, it's what you do." On the battlefield, it ain't what you say, it's how you perform. We on the battlefield, and if that, if those apartments come, we going to be on the front line. We going to be walking around with pistols. We going to be protecting our homes. That's all I got to say.
Aloha, Joshua Eckoff, Villages at Walnut Creek. I want to say thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you for everyone who came out, and I want to show you what the front lines look like. That's what rental properties bring you. That's what renters, I got none against renters, so we got to come up with a new word because I was a renter before I bought my first home here in Henry County. That's two houses down, where the LLC owns four homes in our community, and rent them all out. They don't care. So, moving on to a happier note. For y'all don't know, this is called Less Litter, More Love. You know, also, the watershed coalition, since he's not here, I'll speak on that. Walnut Creek's deteriorating. Y'all don't understand how much beer bottles I pick up off this road. So no more rental properties. They bring crime, violence, litter, drinking and driving. I can't even get a flock camera on this road. And y'all want to put how many more people? As well as on the way here, you guys speak of lights. Lights work. We keep bringing up Jonesboro, but there are no raised pavement markers or lines on the road out front. So it's like, how are y'all going to do what you say when out front, on the way here, there are no raised pavement markers or lines when we leave this place? But we're going to put up more apartments, gated communities, which is a false sense of security because we have to protect ourselves nowadays. So I just want y'all to know, you know, they bring up valid points. I don't know if y'all noticed, but things are getting better and things are getting worse. So I just want us to keep moving in the direction. Like, I want to be able to talk to you guys and show you the things that are being done right in other counties and communities and cities and states around the world. They're putting glow-in-the-dark paint on the roads so people can see and not die. You know, when I've been reporting that the lights don't work on our express lanes for three years, and now the DOT engineer of Henry County is like, "First, I've heard of it." No, I've been bringing this up to everybody from the county manager. So if you're going to bring more apartments and not townhomes that match our homes across the street that are worth half a million, a Publix coming with no walk-around pond, there's nowhere to go in our community to walk and enjoy it without getting run over or killed. Like, I get threatened picking up trash on the side of our roads, and we're going to bring more apartments? Have y'all seen them apartments across the street by Firehouse Subs? That road is so nasty and dirty, they're not even landscaping, cleaning. But okay, let's throw up more apartments. No, enough is enough. Please stop it. No, condos maybe, but not, none of this. Also, this is what our curbs should look like. Not weeds growing out of them. That's in front of Firehouse Subs. We'll be doing the next one here soon. But I just want to show y'all what the community can do when we come together. And with your help, this will be the place people want to move to and stay and not leave like all of our teachers are and our officers who are underpaid. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm done. I'm done.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry.
Your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Tony Long, and I've been an 18-year resident of Vinings Park, which is right there by the sub, Fireman's Sub Restaurant. And I just want to let you know what I've experienced. On the left side of Vinings Park subdivision are apartments being built directly behind the residents' houses there. When they initially started, the drilling, the hammering, the noise was so loud that it rattled our houses. And we're not talking about just two-level apartments being built. We're talking about three stories high that overlook the privacy fences of those residents. And the proximity is so close that they can just look over into the, whoever occupies those apartments, they can overlook the residents in Vinings Park's backyard. Why that was approved, for them to build that close to our subdivision, I have no idea. But if that's what's being approved, look out. It's going to happen. It's going to happen all over Henry County. That should have never been approved. So not only that, there's a Publix one exit above me. One exit above me, there's a Publix one exit below me, and now there's a Publix down the street from me. How many Publix do we need? The public hearing that we were supposed to initially been approved to talk about having to do with the land, not for from Firehouse Subs, that should not be approved. We don't have the infrastructure as far as our roads to keep building like that. The traffic is so bad, we can't hardly get out of our own subdivision. It takes forever. I live less than a mile from I-75. It takes me forever. So now I go up to take a backstreet to get up to Jodaco so that I can get ahead of all of that traffic. It's just too much. It's too much building going on without any consideration to your constituents who voted you into office.
Your name and address, please, ma'am.
Good evening, board residents. My name is Sabrina Silin. I live at 2401 Lake Irma in Crystal Lake area. I am opposed to the apartments. I have, I'm a Georgia native, and I'm a retired military. My husband and I, we chose, we searched and searched, and we chose Henry County as the place that we would retire. Apartment buildings are a way of utilizing less space for more people, and we're overcrowded. We are overcrowded. My kids are, they're both in college now. But I had the experience of having to use... But I had the experience of having to use Dutch Town, to use Jonesboro Road to get to the school. It was horrible then, and it's only gonna get worse. It's worse now, and it's only gonna get worse if you add an apartment building in that location. In reference to the Publix, I was appalled because we have, we don't have the infrastructure to support a Publix at the place where it's being located. We just don't have it. The roads, the road needs to be expanded. If this road, Jonesboro Road, would not be expanded until what? Uh, twenty... That's horrible. You cannot put the cart before the horse. It's, it's just too, it's gonna be too much, and we already can't handle it. So, if we put the apartment buildings, like I said, less space, more people. We're overcrowded, I am against it. It's just, we're just overcrowded. And I don't, I don't use Jonesboro Road any longer. I go the back way. I don't try it. On Saturdays, you will not get out. You try to get to the highway to get to I seventy-five, you're gonna be sitting there. And I, I feel for the, uh, parents who have to take their kids to Dutch Town. Because trying to get out of the, 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 you should be able to get there in a matter of what? Probably like no more than fifteen minutes. Well, that is not gonna happen because it's just overcrowded. And like I said, I'm opposed to it. I moved here, chose the area for what it was, and now it's becoming something that I am absolutely opposed to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening, my name is Gregory Smith, and I live in, um, the same community. And, uh, eighteen oh-nine Schofield Drive, which is in, uh, Crystal Lake. And so, I can only speak from my experience. Uh, this is the only place I've lived since moving from Washington DC, born and raised. Um, and there's areas, uh, surrounding counties there that they had a formula that if they invite the businesses, get the businesses there and get people going to the businesses, then folks would, would obviously wanna live there. And the, the same with the infrastructure as far as the train system. I'm, I'm going around, I'm, I'm coming back. Um, so they developed the subway system and then the businesses around there and apartments. I'm not opposed to apartments. I had to get my start in an apartment. It's, it's just strange where the apartments are placed. There's plenty of rural areas in, in Henry County. Plenty of rural areas in Henry County that apartments can go, I, I, I'm sure. But right there, uh, it's, it's, it's a nightmare. Um, so, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that to say, when, when, I don't know, you guys look pretty smart, and I'm sure you've spent hours and days and years doing studies. Uh, but what do the businesses say? Like, uh, when I moved here nine years ago, I kept saying, wow, this, this is a great area, uh, a, a great county, I love my community. But I'm, I'm sorry, I was, kinda had a ton of vision. I was just, my world is Crystal Lake. And now I'm starting to force to look outside of that view. And I'm like, y- you know, this is not what I envisioned. I envisioned Whole Foods, uh, up in DC, we have Trader Joe's. I'm not sure if they have it down here. Uh, Sprouts. And, you know, each year, I'm telling my wife, you know, I'm, I'm hoping we get it. So, we have to go to, um, what's that called? Uh, Peachtree, no, past Peachtree City to go to Sprouts. So, the, the, the bottom line is, I'm not sure if, you know, let's say if I had a crystal ball and we can look in the future, six years from now, what businesses do you think would really be attracted to come here with a bunch of, uh, apartments and just other, you know, store? I mean, how many more dollar stores can we put nearby? Uh, you know? I, I, I don't know. Um, but thank you for my time, I appreciate it.
Your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Jasmine Jones. I live at five oh-five Casarino Concourse in Crystal Lake. Um, I just wanna say that I am one of the highest-ranking executives in the country regarding self-storage. And I can assure you that that was very reckless to have another self-storage facility added on Jonesboro Road. I, I work, I work in the third-party management for self-storage facilities. But since we've gone past that, now let me, and I am a numbers person, so let me tell you very clearly and very quickly how you can have a, a community that has high property values go down very quickly. So, for simple number purposes, if you have a, right now with the cost of, the cost of materials and building supplies, if you have a five-hundred-square-foot apartment for the developers to really make a return, they need to charge three dollars a foot. That's fifteen hundred dollars for a five-hundred-square-foot apartment. They use algorithms to charge the rent. So, if they're not having tenants, they're gonna lower the rent. They're gonna add, they're gonna add additional move, free move-ins, just like self-storage does, free move-ins. We have a self-storage facility that you just approved, and then we have a live storage that's not even thirty percent occupied right now. So, that, so you, you do the math and tell me if that makes sense. So, again, back to the apartments, fifteen hundred dollars a month for a five-hundred-square-foot unit that doesn't rent out, those fifteen hundred square, uh, fifteen hundred dollars a month rent now turns to five hundred dollars a month, or Section Eight. A government, it makes it extremely affordable for crime to come into our area and devalue all of our home values. And I think it's very reckless and disrespectful to think that it is okay to bring in another apartment community on, on Jonesboro Road when we're all homeowners here who chose Henry County. So, that's, I'm a, again, a numbers person, there was a, I just presented the numbers to you very clearly. Three dollars a foot to try to make any type of return. And we know that these apartments complexes, no matter what they sell you on, you lose all control once they're built.
Thank you. Thank you. Your name, ma'am, your address.
Hello, thank you guys so much for giving us this opportunity. Um, my name is Susan Dorsonville. My address is eight oh-four Suncrest Court in Crystal Lake Community. My husband and I have been here, um, less than a year, almost a year. We did a lot of searching around Georgia to figure out, we moved from New York. We did a lot of searching from, uh, around Georgia to figure out the best place for us to be. And we landed in Crystal Lake and in Henry County because we thought this was a beautiful area, um, a wonderful area, until we realized the traffic was horrendous. Um, it was really just, it, it was a turnoff. It made me say, this might've been the wrong choice for us. But we're here now, we love our community that we're in. And all I can say is, I wanna say ditto to everything that, that my neighbors have said prior to me. I just wanted to go on the record of saying we do not agree with another apartment complex. And, um, I'm gonna go home, get on my knees tonight and pray to the good Lord that you all are going to look into your souls and truly listen to what we are saying here and not just whoever is making you think it's okay to put another apartment complex here. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Next, please, your name and address.
My name is David Linton. I'm at ten thirty Pampas Way inside of, uh, Crystal Lake subdivision. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your service. It's not easy being a public servant. But I also think that, you know, I've been in Henry County for seventeen years. When I first moved here seventeen years ago, everybody told me I didn't wanna be here. But I always looked into the future. And we, you guys know that we are the fastest-growing county in the state of Georgia. We've grown over a hundred thousand people in the last seventeen years. And so, yes, we need, we need to grow, but we have to be, we have to grow smartly. We don't, I am against the apartments because of infrastructure. You know, people do have to leave, but there's a lot of places in Henry County you could put apartments. But it's the, the, the work on our schools, where our schools are already overcrowded. You know, our public cer- safety people are overworked. We are not growing smartly. I know each of you, I've worked on some of you guys' campaigns. I've worked with you because of, um, my length of time in the, in the community and in the service. And I think it's time for you guys and ladies to think of your legacy. What will your legacy be? Will you be known as the commissioners that turned Henry County into something that we don't know? We always talked about it wanted to be the place to live, work and play. But we're now beginning to turn it into a place where people wanna live here, but are they really gonna play and do they really wanna live here? I think it's time for us to not, and I think what one of the commissioners say, I'm not gonna address names because I know the rules. But as you was talking about the anti-dicking, uh, in Stockbridge, your concerns with traffic, safety and standards. And we're, that's what we have to be concerned about right now. We have to be concerned about our standards, the traffic and safety. We wanna maintain that. And so, I'm imploring upon you, I don't know what the, what the, uh, decision was. I know it's already been passed. Um, but I'd hope that the conditions are in place that you will not let that happen. And I think in the year twenty twenty-two, when you're having meetings about planning, it's time for us to stop with those little signs on the road that people can't see. And you got constant contact, send us all the email, put it on social media so we all know that there are meetings so that we can be here and voice our opinions. And as a parting, as we know that there are gonna be some changes, I'd, on behalf of the constituents of District Two, we'd like to thank our commissioner for her service. We're losing her, but the next district is gonna have a great representative. And so, we thank you for your time. And again, once again, I thank you for your service. Good night.
Thank you, guys. Next, please, your name and address.
My name's Cheryl Spear. I'm at one one oh-eight Oladale Court. Um, I know I'm not from this district area, but I am from Oladale. I just moved into Henry County to get away from all this. I moved from Gwinnett County where it was nothing but buildings and roads, cement and concrete and asphalt. Didn't matter where I looked. Soon as you hit the Gwinnett County line, you stop. It's twenty-four-seven rush hour traffic. I left that to come here. Why did I come here? I came here to get away from the crime, to get away from the traffic. And here it is, we're adding more gas stations where we don't need gas stations. I stood at another meeting and everything fell on deaf ears at that meeting. What I wanna know is, have we taken into consideration the fact that these schools, how much they can handle? Will they be growing? Do the, do the schools in this area actually have any more room to put another student? Because adding another student to another teacher and not having any place for them to grow throws our students behind. I have three children. Luckily, my children are all grown and adults. I have one that just got married in December. I have one that joined the Air Force last October. And I have one that joined the milit- the Army the year before. So, my kids are grown and gone. But in my area where my kids grew up, it was very multicultural, and I enjoyed that part. So, I'm not coming in blind to all the crime that goes on in the, around these areas. I moved out of a one-bedroom apartment to come here. Not only did my one-bedroom apartment go from fifteen forty-five up to sixteen forty-seven within one year, but it also brought in the crime. We had in a gated community.
Ma'am, excuse me, your time is up. I know the clock says different, but I watched it and it was not ticking. Your time is up, and thank you for your comments. Thank you, everyone, Madam Chair.
So, Madam Chair, uh, thank you for, um, letting us make the motion to speak. But I just wanna address a few things and then we're gonna get out of here. Um, I, I'm thankful that the, um, representative said that we're not against apartments. I wanna us to make sure that as a county and as a people that we're inclusive, we don't discriminate whether a person can afford a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house or need to be in an apartment. Because I've got a twenty-three and a twenty-eight-year-old, and they had to go into apartments before they bought homes. It's not about apartments, it's about placement of that apartment complex. So, I wanna say that I have, I have, um, made the motion to approve several apartments in District Two. But the District Two constituents and I made a decision together back in twenty seventeen where apartments would be placed in our district. And we stuck to that. It was close to seventy-five, close to the highway, in the Western Parallel Connector and only in the shopping centers. We set a mark together that once you pass Firehouse Sub, you don't get apartment complexes. And so, I wanna say we still have areas in this county that's in the Western Parallel Connector that may be close to the interstate that don't impede on the houses and the subdivisions. That apartments will go. So, I just wanna make sure that our language, our message about inclusion, diversity, our not being, um, you know, um, saying something against another population or another set of income, we don't want to do that. And I don't want to lead with District Two saying that. It's about the location of those apartments. So, I just wanna make sure because I know that, um, you know, there are some commissioners that don't want no apartments at all in their districts, and that's fine. But we know that the apartments that were built, they were very expensive. You can't even get a one-bedroom under sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars. Because we were strategic about what do we attract in our community. And let me just make a comment about Publix. Had it been Whole Foods, would we be complaining? So, I wa- I wanna make that statement and also to say that that Publix was done and it was already set in place more than ten, fifteen years ago. So, there was nothing we could do about that. So, just setting the record straight. The infrastructure of Jonesboro Road being wired and it was in place long before any of us got up here. But what I know that we've done since I've been on this board and some of these commissioners is that we took Jonesboro Road back over from the state, now it's a local road. We voted for a T-spot, so now we can do something about Jonesboro Road. Okay? So, it's coming, and, and things don't happen just in a four-year term. Thank God you all had me for six years, but had you had me for four or, or whatever, it may not have happened. And, and another constituent said, you're losing me. No, you're not, 'cause I have a business in District Two. So, I may not be the commissioner, but I'm still gonna be a voice. So, we just need to know that we have to continue to listen. And I'm just in respect for the other board members. Um, you know, we do what we're supposed to do, it's our job, but a lot of things we do is not our job. So, a lot of things that your commissioner does is not our job. But I just wanna set the record straight, continue to email, ask questions and be present. And thank you for saying, because a lot of stuff happened because you all are not here. So, show up and get your voices heard. Thank you, Madam Chair, and this board for letting these constituents speak today because I know this has been brewing for a while. Record straight, this has not been approved. So, kill that rumor that the apartments have been approved. It has not been approved. The vote has not taken. At this point, the applicant has taken it off the agenda. This was the same property that was going into place when I first ran for this position. And so, it will continue to come back. And you guys are responsible for making sure you show up and make sure that your voices are heard. So, thank you.
Are there any comments from any other, uh, members of the board?
Most of the chair.
Most, which are?